The pencil's dull. Sure you are.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and that's the thing is, is it wasn't intentional? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna call the Village of Middleville Planning Commission meeting to order. Don't spill that. Can we have a roll call, please?
Jason Holsthausen, here. Bruce Farrell.
Here.
Maria Gustinus.
Here.
Richard Hamilton.
Here.
Troy Newman.
Here.
Amanda Pullen.
Here.
Di Wilke.
All right, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda in front of us.
I would like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Oh.
Down in the bottom for upcoming dates, the ordinance committee meeting isn't posted for May 12th.
Oh, the upcoming dates aren't actually part of our agenda.
Oh, okay, I just noticed it wasn't theirs.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Support.
We have a motion with support to approve our agenda as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. We have an agenda. Minutes from April 15th. Questions, comments, corrections?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from April 15th as written.
Or? We have a motion with support to approve our minutes of April 15th as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have our minutes. Public comment session. Good evening. None? All right, hearing none, we're moving on to new business, master plan survey results.
So there's a handful of themes really wanted to point out to board before going through the survey. One that almost 50% of the respondents that we received responses from have a connection to the Village of 10 years or more. Okay, that the top community values were the walkability, park access, diverse housing choices, downtown vibrancy, and infrastructure. That the housing support, clear support emerged for accessory dwelling units, duplexes and townhomes, particularly to support affordability, aging in place, and housing for younger residents. Concerns about preserving neighborhood character were also noted. So the planning alignment respondents indicated support for proactive zoning updates and targeted planning for future growth areas. So if we could go through the slides, so you see here under the... So under this survey overview, we had 186 respondents from the survey. So that's a little over double. It's actually about 250% of what we had from the 2021 master plan update for responses. So right here, this is the breakdown of like where those residents are from, whether they live, work, or own, showing you, you know, 144 identified as living in the village. This is important because when we did our previous updates, we did not know how many of the people were from the village or other areas, as a lot of our feedback was done at like county events. And here is the, what I mentioned earlier, you know, 90 of the people identified as being here for over 10 years. So we were talking about most important aspects of the village, that there was a Likert scale, you know, five categories that individuals had to pick from in regards to what meant the most to them. So going through this, you see that the other category is slightly higher, touch base in that on the next slide. Shouldn't consider that one because, you know, that was just, there's only a handful of selections. But, you know, infrastructure and public safety were by far on top. The least concerned ones were the downtown development and environmental sustainability. If we can go to the next slide. So these are just some of the terms that came out from the other responses. So this is a fraction of the response rate as, you know, many of the survey respondents did not select the other category, they left that blank. But, you know, some areas, you know, outside the purview of this, you know, but those are just common terms that we're seeing when we're going through this.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
Is the size of the text representative to the quantity of the?
These are just responses, and there's no correlation between the size and the number. It's just codified that some of the smallest ones may be the most seen. If we can go to the next one. So right here, you know, these are some direct quotes that were received from like what we said were like the opportunities and challenges. So these areas, you know, like you can see like community strength, people said, people in relationships, you know, you know, traffic and safety, speeding, no police presence, dangerous areas. These are direct quotes, no clarification done whatsoever. Keep on scrolling. So the development focus areas, so where should the village focus development over the next five years? This is one of those open-ended questions we're hoping to get, you know, very degrees of responses. And as you can see here, areas that we've seen focus points were potentially area plans, housing choice, downtown revitalization and walkability or streetscape. You know, are some of the key ones that came out. Items similar to like land use zoning did come up. Infrastructure came up to a lesser amount, even though it was shown as a higher priority on the Likert scale. You know, it just didn't come up quite as often on the open-ended questions. Parks and retail were mentioned too. So regarding the follow-up community interests, you know, that, you know, you know, broke this down into housing, parks and green space, transportation, downtown economic development, as well as planning and zoning, you know, for their interests. But I, most importantly, is, you know, regarding our next steps, talk about accessory dwelling units, as you recall, this is one of the items that's shown in our master plan as something that the community has wanted. We have gotten more, you know, feedback in support of this. The ordinance committees also, you know, started the process to potentially discuss about ordinance amendments to allow for accessory dwelling units. So there's two key takeaways I would hope to discuss with the board is one regarding the interest on moving forward with accessory dwelling unit language. And also, as this does help with supporting our housing flexibility and advancing, you know, the master plan goals. But other area to mention too, that this may be a future conversation for a master plan committee, we can talk about later. But what are we looking for in regards to possible scope and scale for a future update? This is just a synopsis and codification of results, but you can see that the results that were provided to you today are much different than some of the other master plan feedback that we've received. So I don't know, being that we're close to that five-year mark, if the commission would be looking at potentially making some minor updates to the master plan, or if we may be looking at more of a invasive rewrite. Something to consider, but that's what I have for the survey.
For the ADUs, I recently had a gentleman come into where I work, and he does that kind of work, builds those type of things. And he gave me his business card because he has worked with several cities on ordinances and things like that. So I'm happy to pass that information along to you if you'd, if you'd like some insight.
I would appreciate it.
Okay. All right.
I don't think it's a secret that I'm all for ADUs in all sorts and forms.
Yeah.
On any parcel that can fit a shed in the backyard, they can fit an ADU. How far are we into language for that? Ordinance committee?
So we discussed about allowing them, but we have not created the language defining what an ADU is.
Okay.
So that still needs to be discussed. That'll likely be one of the topics that's discussed on May 12th.
I feel like there's some other impacts, more than just having a dwelling unit, if there's gonna be extra vehicles involved with the extra residents. And drivers are already too short for people to park their cars, and we have rules about parking in the street, so that could be a conflict.
Not gonna like my answer. I don't care.
In the direction that we were discussing too, was possibly on lots that are viewed to be large enough in regards to our future land use plan to allow for more dwelling units than what is currently there. Those may be acceptable lots for allowing ADUs, where lots that are already denser than what our future land use plan shows may not be ideal choices. That can help to potentially eliminate some of the parking concerns as well.
Whole lot to do with the footprint. Egress, green space, trying to stay away from what we don't like, in terms of, just like what Mary said.
Well, and we, we have existing like lot coverage ordinance and stuff, so. Yes, I don't think it's a secret that this board is okay with ADUs, and once we think, once we figure it out.
Right.
Yeah, once we figure it out, yeah. A couple of things I wanted to point out, or a reading survey, opportunities and challenges and some of those other things. Like, there's, there's some of these things that we, we can't do anything about. So, which I, I know not everybody realizes that, that the master plan can encourage things, but it's, like, this board is not... We, we don't have any say in our police contract, for example. But we can't, we can't plan for safer streets.
Master plan is a lot philosophical.
Yeah.
Yeah. And because infrastructure doesn't show up, it's just taken for granted. That's like 90% of our budget is infrastructure.
Yeah.
So.
I, I...
That's a very good report.
Yeah.
The way you presented it.
I was encouraged that infrastructure was high, high on respondents' priority list. That, that, that means out of these almost 200 people, they, they realize that infrastructure actually is important. So I guess a question would be, do we want to go for another update, or do we want to bite off a rewrite?
We're only five years into the...
Which we're required to do at least something every five.
It's not like it's been decades and decades.
And this is something too, that, you know, I'll get into in, as part of my report, but we have not established a master plan committee yet, so this may be something that, you know, we're better suited for them to discuss.
Because the, the 2021 was an update. When was the last full rewrite?
2020?
2008, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah.
Did we know the rewrite with Brian?
No, that, that was just an update.
That was just not, okay.
The one that was published in 2021 was, was just an update. Yeah, that was not a full rewrite.
You know, in reading it, it's pretty, pretty good to what we're doing.
Yeah.
And I would think an update would just be appropriate, not rewriting the whole thing.
Yeah, I, the, the 2021 edition, I don't think is, is bad. I do think there's areas for improvement in there. Like, hey, there's some of the parcels that we can just cut the page out because we, we have development finally.
That's right.
Yeah, so I, I do think, yeah, maybe starting with a committee and identifying targeted updates of the current plan might be a, a good step for that.
And if there's too many, then?
If, yeah, if the list gets long, then... So what would you like from us, Doug? Like...
I don't need anything specific, then. We'll get into it as part of the report.
Okay. It, it, I think it would behoove all of us to, everyone has their physical copy, maybe?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
I do.
Take that, grab a marker, grab a pen, and, and make some notes when you get a chance of things that you think, and then we can get them to a, a committee, whether it's all of us or a subset of us, and, and really start talking about it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. But, yeah, I, I do, um... I know, well, we can talk about that at the committee reports, but the, the, the next steps slide there.
Yeah.
The, yeah, ADUs, ordinance committee is getting some, some code language for that. Housing flexibility of whether or not... Because I know we, we, our last big text amendment to the zoning ordinance, we dropped a bunch of use by rights for denser housing for duplexes and tries and quads. And so, yeah, ordinance committee identifying maybe something else to add for housing flexibility. Because I think we're all for taking whatever we can get, because we don't have enough. Okay.
Do you want some input from all of us on our thoughts on ADUs?
If you want to write something up and send it to Doug, then yes.
That way I can make sure it's made publicly available.
Yeah. And then the, the ordinance committee can take that into account when they talk about it more. Don't look at me like that. Yeah.
Or could he just come to a next meeting and fuck that at that point?
So this board has yet to establish a master plan committee. It may end up, you may decide to have it as the interim board.
Okay. All right. Other questions for Doug about our survey results?
I'm surprised 186 is almost double.
So we had, I believe we had 83 at our last update.
Yeah, it's not one of those things that a lot of people seem to respond to.
What was the methodology of giving...
So...
A lot different than before?
So we did, we had had a consultant do it the previous time, but that was done at a community event. That this, our responses were primarily through news media, social media, you know, QR codes via business cards, you know, just various distribution methods. It wasn't at any specified event, so.
And then the problem with the community event was most of the people there weren't residents of the middle.
Community?
Well, like, community as, as a whole, we, we accept those outside of our limits.
This depended more on you as a commission than it did on a specific location, word of mouth.
Yeah, all right, when I look at decades, one of the big things is land acquisition. In order to keep small town effect, how many three-story things are we gonna go up with? We're hemmed in.
Yeah, it's either up or out.
Hemmed in by the hill.
No.
That's, that's a real challenge.
Yeah.
How our growth is potentially gonna be quite limited.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the moving out is, we're gonna have to find the right land with the right developer and...
I, I was kind of amused.
It's happened recently.
I was amused a little bit about one of the statements about, somebody said about how they wanted Middleville to be, it sounded like they wanted to be like Caledonia, one of more things on 37. And it's, we don't want more things on 37.
We don't have more of 37 to put things on.
Yeah, we're...
And, you know. And we have a big challenge out in the next decade, in the decade beyond that.
Downtown Caledonia is a ghost town, isn't it? The actual downtown.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want that to happen.
What's the population for Caledonia? Does anybody know?
Close times.
The actual village?
Yeah, inside the village limits.
Way different than Caledonia Township.
And water provided by the township.
Yeah. Caledonia Village and Caledonia Township have a very different relationship than Middleville and Thornham Township.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, committee reports. You guys met, ordinance committee? Yeah? What'd you talk about?
Ordinances.
And committees.
Doug's the baby.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I knew that.
Kind of items we, I just touched base about, but...
Yeah.
All right, we've got Doug's report.
So, one thing I'd like to add on is whether it is, you know, we haven't discussed about the master plan committee. Reason I'm bringing this up is besides the reason we just mentioned, but also that per the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, section 125.3865, the planning commission shall annually prepare a capital improvement plan of public structures and improvements. That hoping we can potentially at the next meeting, have an election in regards to who would possibly be on that committee, so we could try to coordinate said meeting in preparation for future upcoming capital improvement plans.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Beyond that, ordinance stuff, you know, things are moving forward. Don't have a ton of permits. The rezoning request that was before the board hasn't went to the village council as of yet, still waiting on the ordinance. Don't know if there's any, there's a lot of other things going on, but not sure if there's anything else to give questions or concerns about.
207 East Main, which building is that?
So that would be the property that's just east of the former auto garage?
Oh, okay. All right, questions, comments for Doug?
Fireworks?
One other thing I'll mention too is that Bradford White is planning on having a tour, you know, that letting me know if you are interested or available. I believe that's January or July.
That tour is pretty neat.
31st. Just, you know, send me your cam and email, let us know if you're interested. There will be limited availability.
What was the date again?
Uh, July 31st. Still trying to finalize times.
Bruce, you'd seen the, the Jake's Fireworks, 307 Arlington, that's their tent next to the bank.
Yeah.
They were there yesterday, last year.
That's correct.
Yeah, they were there.
I'm just curious on the report, 2508, did one chicken go, go mad or something?
No, so they had...
I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Oh, because it was, because it says chicken and not chickens. All right. Oh, yeah.
On the next page.
Well, the code enforcement report?
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say, did everyone check the code enforcement report to see if their house was on it or not?
Yeah, I did.
I skirted it again.
Not me.
No, you're on there?
No, I, oh, I'm not on there.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully my neighbor gets on there soon. I'm waiting to see my neighbor. He's got a camper in the driveway.
Did you have a question on the code enforcement?
Yes, on the second page, there's an issue with ground cover. So I looked up that code to see what the ground cover issue would be. But that code, the 78627, is for permitted signs.
Oh, is there a typo?
So I'm not sure what the ground cover problem is. That's what I wanted to see.
So we do have ordinance, you know, for each area in regards to ground cover, you know, for make sure that we have proper drainage. But that does appear to be a clarifier.
Yeah, because I think one of those houses is just a mud pit. Right? Yeah, okay.
So I do have a question. It's kind of on this report and kind of not, and it was something that was posted on social media. Waiting. Folks, nobody else is gonna ask it. Yeah. I, I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to confirm. Give me that look, Doug. Does Mr. Pergler, I know he does not follow the trash company, as was alleged today. But does he, he keep citations if your trash can is out in the road, or does he just give you a notice saying this is not where it belongs, put it?
So I'd find it highly unlikely that he's putting citations out in the middle of the road.
He said he's following the truck.
What I would, what I would like to do is, you know, give this information to him, so he can, you know, add an addendum to his upcoming report.
Because I, I did request, unfortunately, I did it anonymously by mistake, but I requested a copy of the citation to be shown so that we could, I, I mean, I know who it is, she's known in the community.
So I don't believe we have any citations at the moment that are related to...
I've never seen one on here.
Because if, if there were, they would have to be on here. So generally, what he does is part of our notifying the public of ordinances, is that he'll send out orange flyers, letting people know about the codes, in case they're not aware, before he, you know, formally investigates.
Is it like the snow one, Snowman?
They're all very similar. They just, they say whatever that ordinance number is and the pertinent information related to it.
They just said he was following the truck today, and people aren't even home from work yet. How can you, you know, violation?
He was not following. It was not following.
I, I know, I get it.
If it's on social media, it's true.
I, I know, right?
He's on three, two to three in the morning.
The last week, it was a super windy day when the trash cans were out. And they were literally being pushed by the wind.
Oh, yeah.
Street into the road, so it's not like, you know.
Yeah.
It must have been windy.
Being irresponsible.
The day of the big pickup, which people picked up their own stuff and took to the distribution. My three acres was covered with stuff, including a bi-fold door for a closet. It must have blown off of some trailer. Uh, you couldn't see us laying flat, so Pergler would have never saw, saw that.
All right. Anything else for Bob? Nothing else for Bob? Okay.
Your others have been pretty well done.
Yeah.
They missed the memo on the whole taking it. All your, your cardboard and everything all over their front yard.
All right, second public comment session. Still none? Hearing none, how about comments from up here?
Oh, you're stuck with me for another two years. That's my com, that's my comment.
Uh, I saw, I saw that you signed paperwork too.
There was no objection on the council, cause it didn't know how to get rid of them.
Give me, is that what it was?
Kinda figured.
You guys do great work. You know what you're doing.
Yep.
All right.
Good question, do you have any updates on Lake Mid-Villa? I, obviously they got one building, just to rough it in.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's moving along, uh, that there hasn't been any updates besides the construction that you see going on there? On my.
I thought they were gonna start on the north. But they're starting on, are they gonna do more than they initially planned?
Yeah, cause they, they previously, they debated on whether or not they were gonna do, you know, all six at once, or if they're gonna split it into two phases.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
Is the lift station in?
I will get you an update on that, cause last I knew that the majority of the water and sewer was complete, but I have to verify that.
We think it would be, or darn close.
Yeah.
I went through a walk last week, maybe two weeks, about a week ago. And there was pipes all laid out there right by where the lift station would be. So, kinda looks like they're prepping for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. That could be supplied too.
Yeah.
Everyone's are all water.
It could be that, yeah.
Well, what's happened with Copper Rock and Rose Creek Street?
So, we haven't gotten a development proposal as of yet. They've been working with the Berry County Land Bank or Brownfield Redevelopment Authority on acquiring funds for doing their due diligence. Um, that I know they've completed survey work. Um, but we still have not received a timeline or a proposal. They gave us a preliminary development agreement, said they're gonna draft something else with their attorney, but we're still in the process of getting that documentation.
Do they have a deadline?
I have not received a deadline. Uh, I do know.
We don't, we haven't given them a deadline.
We haven't given them a deadline. They, uh, have moved forward with their project in Hastings, so hopefully that helps with, uh, as we're taking a timeline moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
Let's have a random question.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same question you have. We didn't, we didn't hear from them.
Right.
Yeah. There is a walkway in the, um, what is that mall? The, I wrote it down. Town center? Between Exxon and the ice cream shop, there's a little sidewalk walkway there.
Yeah.
And it's covered back to front with gravel. So who's responsible for clearing the walkway if it's a P U D? I mean, does this?
It's the, the landowner.
How do we communicate that? And it's, it's, cause it's a walking risk for people.
Is that, was that on the sidewalk?
Yeah, literally, and I had to walk around the sidewalk.
That's Bob. That, that's, that's Bob, that's code enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, you're ta, are you talking about the, uh, private street that runs behind the gas station?
From behind the gas station, then it connect, there's a driveway that goes into the mall. And then there's a walkway from that driveway towards the ice cream shop.
Okay. Next to the retention pond?
Yes. Right in front of the pond, yeah. And the whole thing is just covered with gravel.
Yeah, that would be the shopping center's property.
Okay.
I know that recently transferred ownership, so it's possible that there could be some.
There's, there's.
Can reach out.
That's the, well, so that, that's the ice cream shop.
That will walk you right north of your finger there.
Yeah.
Little section there is, I don't know. Cause the street is clean, but the sidewalk is just very gravel.
Yeah, so that, that's Pergler. Yeah.
Okay.
Issue, yeah.
All right.
Can let her know.
Okay. Anything else, folks? Hearing none, I move we adjourn.
Support.
Ooh, you can pick one, Kim. We've got a motion with support to adjourn, all those who favor say aye.